I call this meeting in the North Adams City Council to order for January 24, 2023. This meeting is being ordered. The board is taking hold.
Blackmer.
Here.
Barbo. Bona.
Here.
Harpen.
Here.
Abasahen. Alesskowitz.
Here.
Sapienza.
Here.
Shade.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. We have seven present. Had to do the backwards math. Please rise for a moment of silence, remembrance. Please remember Lawrence Larry Jarrett, former member of the Windsor Lake Commission. And the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I'm not making any major changes to the committee and liaisons. I do want to clarify, there seems to be confusion. You can be friends, you can socialize with other councilors who are on your committee. The only thing you have to be careful of is deliberating and discussing issues that you expect to be before you with said friend if they are on the same committee, if it makes a quorum of that committee. So, it's not that you can't be friends with somebody on your committee. So, I just want to clarify that. So, the 2023 committees and liaisons. Community Development Chair, Counselor Abasahen, Counselor Bona, and Counselor Shade. Finance, Counselor Bona Chair, Counselor Blackmer, Counselor Sapienza. General Government, Counselor Wilkinson Chair, Counselor Alesskowitz, Counselor Shade. Public Safety, Counselor Sapienza Chair, Counselor Harpen, Counselor Abasahen. Public Services, Counselor Harpen Chair, Counselor Barbo, Counselor Wilkinson. Liaisons, Airport Commission, Counselor Barbo. Bart Charter Public School, Counselor Shade. Husick Water Quality District, Counselor Alesskowitz. Mass Moca Commission, Counselor Sapienza. McCantech Regional Technical Vocational High School Committee, Counselor Bona. North Adams Contributory Retirement Board, Counselor Wilkinson. North Adams Housing Authority, Counselor Barbo. North Adams Planning Board, Counselor Blackmer. North Adams School Committee, Counselor Abasahen. Traffic Commission, Counselor Harpen. President Appointments to the Inclusion Diversity Equity and Access Commission, Counselor Shade. Moving on to approval of the minutes, we'll do each one separately. Motion to approve, November 9, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Mayor?
I'm sorry. I was.
The minutes are written for Tuesday, November 9, but that was Election Day, so it should have been Wednesday, November 10.
No, it was Wednesday, November 9.
Okay. Well, part of it's incorrect in there.
Would you like to move to amend?
Please move to amend.
Second.
Okay. Need to vote on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Now to vote on the, any other discussion? Move to vote? Motion on a second, an amendment approved. Move to...
Vote as amended.
Thank you. Let's vote on that as amended, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes of December 27, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Alesskowitz, Counselor Sapienza, discussion? I'll actually look around this time. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes from January 10, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Alesskowitz, Counselor Shade, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hearing of visitors on agenda items. This is an opportunity for the public to speak for two minutes on an agenda item. Does anyone wish to address the council on an agenda item? Please approach the microphone. Hearing done, we'll move on to, I'm going to open a public hearing. Council Paper 12,215, a public hearing regarding driver violations and potential suspension or revocation of OTT taxis' operating license, previously set at the meeting of January 10, 2023. Mayor, do you want to give your presentation?
Actually, I'm going to turn this part of the meeting over to Chief Wood.
Okay. Please speak into the mic, it's actually for the people at home.
So, the reason that I'm here tonight is a, some concerns over the operation of OTT taxi and several violations that have occurred since they've opened. I'm going to stay factual to the violations. So, the first concern that they did rectify was that their cabs were registered improperly for the function that they were serving. They were registered as livery vehicles, but they were operating as a taxi. And as we learned, that the required insurance is higher and more restrictive for taxi plates. So, this was brought to Mr. Lord's attention, and the vehicles were eventually brought to compliance. This occurred on a letter I wrote on September, excuse me, October 19. And, and like I said, that was brought to compliance. Another issue that was brought up during this letter was that Mr. Lord, though he's the business owner, he is not a permitted driver for the taxi itself. His license restriction did not permit that. I myself, on I believe it was September 24, stopped Mr. Lord after picking up a fare from the Fresh Grass Festival that evening, and again, he was instructed that night not to. Since that time, he has been seen operating the vehicle. So, that's been a continued issue. The second issue, another driver, I'll call him a driver, Joseph Peany Jr., who is a 16-year-old, is not even eligible to have a permit at all to drive a cab, taxi. I'm told that Peany Jr. does maintenance to the vehicles, cleans them up, answers at dispatch. However, he was, he was stopped by one of my officers with a suspended license driving a OTT taxi on December 4. It's issued a criminal summons for the suspension. So, I'm going to kind of stop with that and take some questions, I think.
Quick question. You said that he was cited and charged. Was that, how was that adjudicated? Or has it not come to?
I don't, I know, I know the license issue has been, has been rectified through the registry. I do not believe, well, I'm not certain that it's gone to court yet.
If you could have that answered by next, when we actually hold the meeting on this. Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Counselor Bona.
Yeah, through the chair, please. All the years I've served here, this is the first I've seen something like this come forward with a taxi license. And I'm just curious, is this something that, if this continues, you're going to be asking the council to revoke the license? Or is this so, to be a stern warning? What is, I guess, the point of this particular hearing?
I don't think I'd be asking for a revocation, but I would be asking for a suspension.
And for procedural reasons, the public hearing is for the city, mostly with basically represented by the chief, to give evidence, and then for the owner of the business to give their side of the story or answer our questions. And then we will meet, we will set up another meeting for next week to actually, and that'll be the only thing on the agenda, to discuss, make a decision on where, how we want to proceed.
Okay.
And what we want to do. That's the process.
That's fine. Like I say, this is a first, I recall doing.
Right. And I would agree with you, and as I haven't run into it. The other issue is that sometimes we move right from a public hearing in. This will allow us time to consider what the chief and what Mr. Lord has told us, and to do, if we have to do any more homework or get any more answers, we will able to give it our thoughtful consideration before we ever move forward with any kind of suspension or revocation.
Thank you.
Counselor Harpen.
Just a quick question. On any of the other instances when they were seen or stopped, or whatever the occasion occurrence was, did they get cited with either a warning or some kind of citation, something written that they went home with, or we can identify that with?
They did not, but I did have them documented. Like I said, this would be a, you know, basically a violation of the city ordinances. It's not, it's not citable under Mass. general law or the traffic code. So, like I said, this is, this is more a violation of the city ordinances.
Okay. Good to know.
I had a hard time reading some of the responses back and forth. Was Mr. Peany specifically ever stopped and cited for driving with someone under the age of 21 in the vehicle who's not their relative or guardian?
No, he was not.
He was not stopped? But he has been supposedly seen or documented?
Yes.
Okay.
Like I said, I could, you know, this quickly, the list I have here, I mean, and not to give the wrong perception, we're not watching OTT taxi like a hawk, but we routinely get complaints from the citizens. This isn't necessarily a police-initiated investigation. It was kind of thrown into our lap. You know, so, we, we have watched and, you know, like, for instance, on 12-3, that's when Officer Barrett first observed Peany Jr. driving the cab. He didn't know at the time he was suspended. On 12-4, he learned of that information, that's when he did a traffic stop. Again, on 12-3, Detective Sergeant Vavory on his off time observed Peany Jr. picking up fare outside of North Adams Armory. He reported that to me. On 12-4, Peany Jr. again was observed in the town of Adams, on Lime Street with a fare in the vehicle. I mean, so, I have, I have reliable information from our officers that they're seeing this.
Counselor Wilkinson.
It's going to be hard to say, but I want to make sure it's said properly. In any of your observations, has any drug activity ever come into this?
It has not.
No, no drug activity?
No.
Thank you.
Do we know if the vehicles are registered to the business or to Mr. Lord himself?
I believe that they are. I would have to pull it up. Do you have that, Mayor?
I remember we voted on this back in September, so I was just, but I can't remember.
Yeah, OTT taxi with a physical address, address of 104 River Street, mailing address of Mr. Lord's residence.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Wilkinson.
Yeah, one more question, if I could. I think I forgot it. Well, I'll pass.
Counselor Harpen.
Quick question. So, does that mean that the vehicles are actually registered with Mr. Lord? Or are they registered with the taxi?
The taxi.
They are, okay.
Counselor Wilkinson.
Keep coming and going. It's embarrassing. I pass again, I'm sorry.
Counselor Bona.
Yes, a couple of things. One, is it required for the taxi drivers to have to have a license posted where customers can see it all?
Yeah, they should have it with them and...
They just have to have it with them, but it doesn't actually have to be posted?
I don't believe it needs to be posted. I don't know that for certain. You know, like I said, going, I've been kind of forced to dive into this city ordinance as far as taxi goes. I've never had to do this before, so, you know, I see little things here and there. I do know they're supposed to have it with them, though.
Yeah, I mean, I've been in other taxis, not, let's say, North Adams, but I thought times they'll have something from the drivers posted up so that patrons can see specifically who the driver is, and can see that actually might be our license. It gives them maybe something where they can prove that they are supposed to, you know, they are allowed to drive. And then the other thing is, of all the incidences, when they're cited, does that go, do you know, does that go to their insurance?
If it's a moving violation, that's citable under the, with the Massachusetts Uniform Citation, it would be. If it's just a violation of the city ordinance, it would not.
So, what about when you got a driver who's got a suspended license?
That...
I mean, I would think their insurance would be concerned about that.
They would be.
And, you know, they might even say, "We're not going to insure you if you're allowing that to happen," so...
Yeah, very well may be.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, clarification. The license shall at all times when driving or in charge of a taxi cab, display such card so as to be plainly visible to the occupants thereof, and carry the license under which a taxi cab is operated. And he shall show such whenever so requested by any police officer or passenger. And that's Section 23-16. So, there is some documentation.
Thank you.
Counselor Alesskowitz, then Counselor Sapienza.
So, Mr. Peany was observed twice and stopped and cited for being a unlicensed driver. Did the business also get cited for having a driver that wasn't eligible? And I see in the comments that Mr. Peany did make a comment to the officer that despite of not having a license, he will continue to operate, so it clearly shows a disregard.
Well, partly that's why we're here tonight. They weren't, they weren't cited at the time. That's why, you know, collectively, with all those, that's why I requested this hearing.
Counselor Sapienza.
Yeah, through the chair to the chief. In some cities, if a taxi is being operated off duty, it's, I guess there's ordinance that they have to indicate that they're off duty or they're not taking fares. I haven't studied the entire ordinance yet, but is that something that we have in our ordinances, to your knowledge?
I don't, I don't believe so. I mean, I know what you're talking about, and I want to say, and I'm speaking really out the cuff here, I think a lot of those cabs like that, they have lights on the top, that they're on or off. None of our cabs in the city have that mechanism. So, I don't know how they would convey that to...
I, you know, you could use a light, or you could use a sign of some type. That's something to discuss at a further time, I believe.
Right.
Yep. Thank you.
Welcome.
Oh, excuse me. I want to thank you, chief, for pulling us all together, and like you said, you got a crash course in taxi cabs. And Mr. Lord submitted a letter to me, which I then had the clerk share with everybody. I wasn't sure if he'd sent it to everybody or not, so I figured I would have the clerk send it to you. Obviously, I put in, "Do not reply, do not reply," all just for your information. But I, it's been suggested that I actually read the letter into the record, so let's give it a shot. To North Adams, City of North Adams, Massachusetts Department of Public Safety, Police Division, North Adams City Council, RE OTT Taxi. Dear NAPD and NACC, first let me thank you for the opportunity to meet, discuss some concerns brought to my attention by Chief Wood relative to OTT taxi. I very much appreciate the opportunity to bring clarity to the issues presented. I first received a letter dated October 19, 2022, from Chief Wood regarding three concerns. The first two concerns were relative to the business vehicles being operated with a passenger plate Honda CRV awaiting a title from R&amp;V, and Toyota Highlander and Honda Odyssey with livery plates. During my initial discussions relative to setting up the vehicles in the appropriate way, I misunderstood the regulation, registration of my business vehicles, which are to be as taxi instead of a livery. Upon learning of this mistake, the underwriter at Mountain One was informed of changes to be made. I immediately undertook efforts to change due to written versus verbal agreements, all the registrations on my business vehicles, and they are now registered as taxi. This resulted in my having to register the vehicles multiple times instead of once, and offered no benefit to me in initially setting them up as a livery. I offer this to confirm that I was not trying to mislead anyone or do anything incorrectly, and have now corrected these concerns. The third concern was relative to my personal, personally operating any taxi in a capacity of picking fares up. I'm aware that I'm not able to operate a taxi in this capacity, and confirm I have not done so and will not do so until one year of my driver's license being reinstated. As a validity, validly licensed driver, I do on occasion operate my business vehicles, but only for personal use. If I ever, if I'm ever seen with a passenger or picking someone up, it's for personal use, and I do not charge a fare. The second letter I received from Chief Wood was dated January 5, 2023, and was notice relative to a meeting to be held on January 24, 2023. I will now address the five bullet points in that correspondence. One, the first concern was about me picking up fares outside North Adams Skating Rink. As I previously, previously stated, I do not operate any taxi for purpose of picking up fares, but I may operate them for my personal use as allowed as a licensed driver. I do visit the cemetery daily at Southview to visit my father, who was buried there. If I had anyone in the vehicle during this time, which I don't recall, it would not have not been for services of providing a fare. Perhaps the disconnect is seeing me driving a taxi with a passenger and assuming the person is paying a fare. The second concern was relative to Joe Peany Jr. being seen driving a taxi. I'm not sure of the concern here, since as a valid permit driver and my dispatcher, he is allowed to drive taxi with a mass licensed driver aged 21 without picking up a fare. I also have him clean the vehicles as well, which requires him to drive them to the car wash, et cetera. The next concern was Joseph Peany Jr. being seen picking up fares outside of the North Adams Armory. I discussed this with Mr. Peany, and Mr. Peany confirmed that he does, did not, and does not pick up any fares. He may occasionally pick up a friend for a non-fare ride or to hang out, but again, he has confirmed any passenger he has is not a fare passenger. Fourth was a concern about Mr. Joseph Peany Jr. being observed in the town of Adams with a fare. Again, Mr. Peany is allowed to drive the taxi with a licensed driver, and often does so with his girlfriend, but not for the purposes of picking up a fare. My only guess is the officer noticed Mr. Peany with someone in the vehicle, his girlfriend, and assumed that she was a fare client. Mr. Peany confirmed he did not on this occasion, and does not carry fare passengers. Last was Mr. Joseph, was Joseph Peany Jr. being stopped by Officer Barrett for having a suspended license. It's my understanding from Mr. Peany, this was a clerical error with the R&amp;V, and was immediately corrected the next day. I cannot comment on the phone call Mr. Peany had during the stop, and what he did or didn't say. I can confirm, however, that Mr. Peany works as my dispatcher, who oversees taking phone calls for requested rides and distributing them to the approved taxi drivers that work for my company. In summary, I'm aware of my not being able to operate a taxi and collect fares from patrons until one year after my license was reinstated. I will only use the taxis for my personal use, and will not drive patrons or collect fares until allowed to do so. Mr. Peany has also been made aware of his inability to drive fares, fare patrons, and has confirmed to me that he has not and will not do so until he is of age and approved as a taxi driver. Lastly, all vehicles, licensed drivers, and insurance policies have been submitted correctly to the police this January for the year, and I hope this information proves helpful explaining any misunderstandings and confirming my desire to only operate a taxi business within the City of North Adams under full compliance of law and regulations. So, are there any more questions for the chief? It is disconcerting that Mr. Lord didn't come to this meeting. Oh, he did here, okay, come on in.
Can I just add something quickly? So, I just want to reference from the city ordinance, Chapter 23, under Taxi Cabs and Buses, Article 1, Taxi Cabs, Division 3, Driver's Licenses, Section 2313, Required Approval of Application and Temporary Licenses. The first sentence, "No person shall drive a taxi cab in no owner or person having care, the care and management of the taxi cabs shall employ or suffer any person to drive the same, other than the person licensed by the city council." So, the way I interpret this ordinance is that if you are not licensed by the city council to drive a cab, you shouldn't be driving that cab, whether it be for business or personal reasons. That's the way I interpret that. And secondly, I would just add, you know, in response to Mr. Lord's letter, the, the issue here is, is going, it's going back to past violations. And I understand that, based on his letter and conversations, that he was either confused or didn't know. I would, I would counter that, saying that, you know, especially in, you know, being in law enforcement, were this a criminal matter, which I understand it's not, that's not a valid excuse. If you were in front of a judge and you said, "I didn't know," that's not going to fly. So, I believe it was, you know, from the beginning, his responsibility to know and understand the requirements and regulations to properly operate a business such as OTT taxi.
Thank you. Is Mr. Lord going to be available to answer questions from the council?
Sure.
Could you come to the mic, please? Also, the microphone is not for the audience, so you need to speak up so we can hear you.
Okay.
The microphone is for those at home.
Okay.
Anyone have any questions? Counselor Bona.
Yeah. While this may be not specifically our jurisdiction, I do know, as a business owner, and I have a vehicle that's registered commercially, that my insurance specifically does say that, you know, they, they ask who will be driving that vehicle, is it business-related?
Right.
I don't believe the insurance would probably be acceptable of saying, "Well, I have some people who drive it for personal use, and some that drive it for business use." So, I would have, and this is just for you to check, because this could come back at you if, for example, one of these drivers that is not a taxi driver happens to get an accident or something with your taxis, how your insurance is going to respond to that, because they may be very specific that it needs to be your licensed taxi drivers that are driving those taxis, and not for personal use of bringing friends and family to different locations. So, just keep that in mind. I have a feeling, if you check with your insurance, you're going to get an answer that says it needs to be your employees, not, not personal use, but, okay?
On the interpretation of what he was speaking of, as far as the taxi and who can be in it, that, my interpretation of that, after he told me when I met with him today, and that is, since I'm not a licensed taxi driver, therefore, I wouldn't be able to drive my own car, because I'm not a licensed taxi driver, even though I own the car, the car is only supposed to be used for a licensed taxi driver. So, my interpretation is not the same as his. So, therefore, his interpretation would be, "I'm not a licensed taxi driver, that's my car, but I cannot drive it."
So, it's not your car, it's the business's?
It's the business car.
It's registered to the business?
Right.
So, the business is, is the owner, not you? It's not your personal vehicle?
Okay, so the business is the owner, but it's my vehicle, but being, my interpretation is, even though it's my vehicle, in the business vehicle, I should be able to drive the car, whether I have a... whether I have a taxi license or not.
And have you gotten a legal ruling on that?
No, actually, we brought it up today and we discussed it. We, his interpretation, and we were not sure. He just found out about a week ago, and then when we met, we discussed it, and I wasn't sure.
But but legally, it's the business that owns the vehicle.
It is.
So, yeah, while you may own the business, it's not your vehicle, it's registered to the business.
Right.
So there is a difference. It's not your car, it's not like my car out in the lot.
Right.
It would be like Counselor Bona brought up the example, his car that's registered to the business is not his personal vehicle.
Right.
So there's a difference.
Right. So to clarify that ordinance, it's the business vehicle, so I'm not able to drive that vehicle because I don't have a taxi license?
That's the way I would read it.
I would think you would need to get clarification, one, from, you know, illegal and 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 again, your your insurance. Just because you own it, there's many businesses that own pieces of equipment that the owners own, but they can't use because they're not specifically licensed or certified to use that equipment.
Correct.
You could own a fleet of 18-wheelers. If you're not licensed to drive those 18-wheelers, just because you own them does not give you the right to drive them. You would need to be.
Sure.
So again, it is a legal question, but I would not automatically go into this assuming just because I own it, I can use it, you know?
I would say the same for your on your junior operator, who's not even 17, and obviously can't have his hasn't had his license for six months, because you can't get a license until you're 16 and a half, and he's not 17 yet, so that would be also, and and I also, you know, I kind of I found it odd that, so you just let Mr. Peany drive around, his friends around? Does he pay you for personal use of the vehicle? Does he give you a bus fee for mileage?
No. No, he usually goes out on a Saturday or Sunday. His girlfriend is a licensed OTT taxi driver until the end of the year. She now has a new job with the DCF, but until then, on the weekend in the early morning, he would drive with her. He does dispatching, which can be at the office or on the road, you can move the phone over. So it was something they commonly did in the morning on Saturday and sometimes on Sunday as well. He would be in the vehicle with her, and she was a licensed OTT taxi.
He was driving the vehicle, though?
On on that occasion where he was pulled over?
Yeah. Yeah, he was driving or she was driving?
On the occasion where he was pulled over, he was driving, and she was in the passenger seat. And it was my understanding after that it was a clerical error with the RMV, he went back down, he went to the police station as well, and the next day, he was on the road, and he was driving his own vehicle with her.
Anyone else have questions for Mr. Lord? Then I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Oops, hold on.
Does the gallery get to ask questions? It is a public hearing?
They can make comments, yeah, they could if they want to. So if anybody wa- I'm sorry, it wasn't even, anybody wish to approach the council with a comment regarding this? Okay. Mayor, do you have anything else to add?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, a motion to close the public hearing. I heard one.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Counselor Sapienza, Counselor Bona, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd like to schedule a special meeting next Tuesday at, what's next Tuesday, at 6:30 to with the only thing on the agenda to be to discuss the recommendations of the chief? Is, do we have, will we have a quorum is what I'm trying to get at?
For when? Next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday at 6:30.
Yeah, I can be there.
I'll be there.
One, two, three. Counselor Harpen?
Yep.
Four, Counselor Shade, five, okay. So we will, um, we will have, it'll be on the agenda to discuss and make a decision on this.
Very good, thank you.
Based on the recommendations and any other work that anybody else does in the meantime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Without objection, I am going to move Council Paper 12,00217, Mayor's Communication Number Nine, requesting time to publicly swear firefighter Jared Blondin into service with the North Adams Fire Department. Mayor?
Seems like I've been doing a lot of swearing lately, but this is all good. Just need to find my glasses.
Oh, I can see you.
Hello, Counselor Wilkinson. Great, so I'd like to call Chief Lefave and Jared Blondin to the front, please. Mr. Cardamino, can you hear me okay? Bob?
Can you hear me when I talk?
So, good evening. Tonight, it is with great pleasure that I present to you firefighter Jared Blondin for swearing in as a full-time firefighter with the city of North Adams. Firefighter Blondin is from North Adams and a 2020 graduate from McCant Tech. He recently graduated from the Fire Academy on January 13th. Prior to joining the North Adams Fire Department, he was a member of the Adams Volunteer Fire Department. Mr. Blondin, I'm over here. As you take your oath, I ask that you promise to be concerned for others, that you have the willingness to help those who are in need, that you have the strength to bear whatever burdens might be placed upon you, and you have the strength of mind and body to deliver safety to all the residents of the city of North Adams. Think you can do that? I know you can. I would now ask Clerk Valiers to administer the oath to firefighter Blondin.
Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jared Blondin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Opposed upon me.
Opposed upon me.
As full-time firefighter.
As full-time firefighter.
Of the North Adams Fire Department.
Of the North Adams Fire Department.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I can give a minute if anybody wants to not stay and watch sausage being made. You're more than welcome to leave. You're more than welcome to stay. Yeah, we're out of here.
Are we good to move on?
Thanks. Council Paper 9513-31, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 7, Section 7-11 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Regarding a Change of Permit Price. Last voted to postpone from the meeting of November 22nd. Do we have a motion to continue and then the Counselor?
Motion to continue till second meeting of February.
And then, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have an update?
Yeah, just a brief update. So what I have here currently, and I think this is all I've gone through, there's 26 pages, and these are not full ordinances, these are just parts of ordinances that list certain fee prices. And when, again, this all started, we were given a spreadsheet with fees, and we went over those, but we never really looked at what was already in our ordinances. So all these fees that are in our ordinances, the goal is to remove them and have it sort of all refer to the schedule of fees. That way, down the road, we can just change the schedule of fees. But that being said, there are an awful lot of fees, and they're not just, for example, such-and-such license, $75. In some cases, they're actually in the wording and things like that. So it did sort of open up a bit of a Pandora's Box of when I started searching the ordinances and finding all these fees. I also found fees which may go back that are not on the spreadsheet, but they're in the ordinances. So there are some additional ones that we may need to go over, but that's where the time has been spent searching the ordinances. So hopefully, another month, we'll 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 get that closer or done.
Hmm, just as a follow-up, Mayor, is there a way we can coordinate and hopefully get this done as a municipal bulletin, since there's so many different things, and that way, we don't have to pay a gazillion dollars to publish it all?
Sure, happy to help any way that we can.
Yeah, I mean, my guess is it will be over.
Yeah, well, I don't know if, yeah, my guess is, like, the CNC plan is eight pages in of itself. I know there was a question on if each one is separate. I would think that what we're doing and streamlining would be qualified, but if we could get an opinion and if we could get some help on writing the actual ordinance language of all these different changes.
I'll coordinate with the mayor's office.
Okay, thank you.
And probably have to connect with the solicitor at some point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We, anyone else have anything to add to this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 11,826, An Ordinance Amending the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Regarding the Various Fees Established in the City Code. That last was postponed from meeting of November 22nd.
Is that the same base?
Pretty much.
Yeah, continue second meeting of February. I think they just overlap.
Yep. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper, yay, I got it. Council Paper 12,218, Mayor's Communication Number 10, Requesting the Review Taxi Ordinance by the Public Safety Committee. A motion to refer to public safety would be in order?
To move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mayor, would you like to give us an update?
So the only reason I'd really like this to go to public safety is I'd like to have us collaboratively, both the administration and the city council, look at all of the sections.
Yep.
Some of them still refer to Commissioner of Public Services, some of them have some weird terminology, but I think there's some areas that we need to tighten up on, and so some of that is about process, if there are issues, so we have a process to follow. So I look forward to talking to public safety about that.
Do we have a date certain to come back?
At this point, I would like to bring that back, the first meeting in March, or do we want to do that sooner?
I would like it sooner, if we could meet in the next two weeks and bring it back, like, the last meeting in February.
Second meeting in February?
That'd be February 28th.
To move.
amended and moved.
Well, he never got a document anyway.
Oh, okay. Oh, I thought one of them did, okay. So we have a motion to refer to public safety and bring back, yeah, we did, bring back, amended to bring back with a date certain of February 28th. Any more discussion?
Yeah, not to ask to be the amendment, but I would just make sure, and I'm sure the mayor will, to make sure probably that the chief be at the meeting.
Yes, I'd like to include the chief and the lieutenant.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,219, Mayor's Communication Number 11, Recommending the Appointment of Paul Senical to the Planning Board for a Term to Expire February 1st, 2027. Without objection, I will file the communication. Motion to?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I'm going to abstain.
All in favor?
Stain.
Aye.
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 One, two, three, four, five, we have five yays and two abstentions. Motion carries. Let's see, Council Paper 12,220, Mayor's Communication Number 12, Recommending the Reappointment of Robert Davis to Mass MoCA Commission for a Term to Expire February 1st, 2026. Without objection, I'll file the communication. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,221, Mayor's Communication Number 13, Recommending the Reappointment of Gail Sellers to the Mass MoCA Commission for a Term to Expire February 1st, 2026.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,222, Mayor's Communication Number 14, Recommending the Reappointment of Eric Kearns to the Mass MoCA Commission for a Term to Expire February 1st, 2026. File the communication.
Motion to approve.
Counselor Luskowitz?
Second.
Counselor Sapienza? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Counselor Harpen? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,223, Mayor's Communication Number 15, Recommending the Appointment of Roger Urban to the Cemetery Commission for a Term to Expire February 5th, 2026. Without objection, I'll file the communication.
Move to approve. Second.
Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Luskowitz? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Council Paper 12,224, Mayor's Communication 16, Recommending the Appointment of Erica Adams to the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Access Commission for a Term to Expire February 8th, 2026. Without objection?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Sapienza and Counselor Wilkinson? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Council Paper 12,225, Mayor's Communication Number 17, Recommending the Reappointment of Shannon Santali to the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Access Commission for a Term to Expire February 8th, 2026.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,226, Mayor's Communication Number 18, Recommending the Reappointment of Jennifer Choquette to the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Access Commission for a Term to Expire February 8th, 2026. File a communication.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Luskowitz, Counselor Wilkinson? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,228, Communication from Counselor Sapienza, Requesting Time for Elena Sprague to Read a Letter.
Point order.
I'm sorry.
I think we skipped one, 12,227.
Did it stick? I'm s- no. Yep, I'm sorry, let's go back to the agenda. Thank you. They need to be separate pages. Council Paper 12,227, Mayor's Communication Number 19, Recommending the Reappointment of Kevin Lamb to the Board of Health for a Term to Expire February 6th, 2026. All without objection, I'll file a communication. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Luskowitz and Counselor Sapienza? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Counselor Sapienza, for catching that.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's try again. Council Paper 12,228, Communication from Counselor Sapienza, Requesting Time for Elena Sprague to Read a Letter Written by Ronald Sheldon of the Commission on Disabilities. Without objection, I will file the communication. Counselor Sapienza?
Yes, Mr. Ronald Sheldon has written a letter to the city council, and Elena Sprague, Chair of the Commission on Disabilities, will be reading it for Mr. Sheldon. Chair of the Commission on Disabilities, will be reading it for Mr. Sheldon. Could I have Ms. Sprague approach the podium and please speak into the mic?
Thank you, Counselor. Dear members of the City Council, as an elderly as well as handicapped member of the community, I find it necessary to voice a few areas that I feel are very concerning and particularly non-accessible for persons with disabilities, but who are still able to be mobile. The concerns are as follows, but not limited to. The sidewalk in front of Goodwill has several large cracks, which makes it difficult to travel on with a motorized scooter wheelchair. Both entrances to Big Y parking lot have large cracks with the potential to damage the tires of a motorized scooter wheelchair. Also, between the cart return and cement post, there's hardly any room for a wheelchair or scooter to navigate through. The bridge leading to the corner market, nearly all of the sidewalk is coming up. Starting by surgemed and going up to the BMC Satellite ER and doctor's offices, the sidewalk is also broken in spots. It's very difficult to drive safely while in a motorized scooter wheelchair. The sidewalks on Ashland Street and the areas around the Ashland Street high-rise apartment building are busted up. The sidewalk all the way down American Legion Drive is similarly in need of repair. It already damaged my scooter, which had to be repaired. Many areas of the sidewalk on Church Street also make it very difficult to drive on in a motorized scooter wheelchair. The sidewalks surrounding the post office are terrible, as well as the fact that the door at the post office, although marked as handicapped accessible, doesn't even stay open long enough for a person with a physical disability to get all the way through before it starts to close shut, which I've experienced. Many places of importance that absolutely should be easily accessible to everyone, including those of us with a disability, unfortunately are not. Similarly to the post office, the doors at CVS Pharmacy and the Breen Center are difficult to open. I've gotten stuck on several occasions while attempting to enter and exit the buildings. Even though several of these businesses are private, they are still located within this city. The intent of this letter is not to pick out everything broken and or wrong in our lovely community, but rather to bring awareness to the everyday damages, dangers that I myself face, as well as I am sure many other disabled members encounter, just by simply trying to get around and have access to or in our community. I'm requesting that you take action to resolve these issues. Sincerely, Ronald Sheldon, eighty-five Eagle Street.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor, would you like to respond?
Could I just ask to have a copy of that letter sent to my office? It wasn't in my packet.
Yeah, Counselor Sapienza?
Yes, I will forward the letter.
Yeah, and we're happy to work with Mr. Sheldon. We are in the process of some sidewalk repairs, but I'll take a look at the, the list and let you know where we stand on some things, but we can also help with the private sector as well.
Thank you.
Maybe as the weather warms up, I can take you guys on a tour.
I love that. If you want to walk into them?
No, you can wear your scooter.
Oh, all right, very good.
Application for license to drive a taxi?
I'm for Blackma.
I'm sorry?
I have one quick comment on the, uh, on the letter. I want to thank Ms. Sprague and Mr. Sheldon for their time, and I would suggest that maybe Mr. Sheldon draft or send a copy of this letter to the management of Big Y, CVS, and the Breen Center, and share it with them as well. Since they are private entities, the city really doesn't have a lot to do with that, and I'd certainly encourage you to do that if possible. Thank you.
And the federal government, post offices, federal?
Yes, federal government.
Counselor Harpen?
Do we have someone that is designated as our ADA coordinator for the city? Because I think the letter could be sent to that person as well.
Right now, it's, um, we refer all of those things to Bill Maranti.
Okay, so I, I think that would be a good place to send it as well, because I, I believe he should be able to go to the businesses and...
Yeah, well, my office will be happy to facilitate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for coordinating that, thank you for bringing that up. Okay. Application for a license to drive a taxi from Kenneth Adams to drive for OTT taxi?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Harpen and Counselor Oleskowitz? Discussion?
I think it should be postponed. Maybe a mute point.
Counselor Harpen?
I would just suggest that we, I don't think we've ever been a council that hinders a business, and, and I think the police chief did say he was looking to not take his license away, but possibly suspend it, and, and I do believe that, you know, he still needs to have taxi drivers to run his business, so we're, we're not there yet, and, you know, he, he's still in business, so I think it's appropriate to approve the licenses that he's, he's asking for at this time.
And I also think that we, part of the problem has been hiring cabs, taxi drivers, and we do have a, a percentage of our population that need those services, that don't have, don't have vehicles or don't have licenses. Counselor Sapienza, I saw another hand over here.
Yes, a quick comment. I would suggest that we review all four of these licenses tonight and grant them, primarily because this is somebody's, uh, living and their bread and butter, so I would suggest that we proceed as normal and approve the licenses should, should there not be any other unforeseen circumstances in any one of them, because these people need to work for a living, and I don't want to be in between somebody, I don't want to stop somebody from making a valid living at this point. Thank you.
Someone else had their hand up over on the side?
I did, but Counselor Sapienza said pretty much what I was going to say.
Okay, we've had a motion, a second, we've had discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Opposed?
No.
One abstention, uh, one no. Motion carries. Counselor, and we don't have papers. Application for a license to drive a taxi received from Brian Renell for OTT taxi?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Harpen, Counselor Oleskowitz? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed?
No.
Just to wait till I see it. One nay, motion carries. Uh, application for license to drive taxi received from Kenneth Porter, OTT taxi?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Harpen and Counselor Sapienza? Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One nay, motion carries. Come, uh, application for license to drive a taxi received from Lindsey Wright, OTT taxi? Motion to grant would be in order?
Motion to grant.
Second.
Counselor Sapienza, second? Discussion? All in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor?
Yeah, the only thing, if you look on that application, and I guess we don't really ask it, but it does say the license has been suspended in the past for DUI, but it doesn't give a timeline, like, I don't know, um, you know, if it was a year ago, twelve years ago, twenty years ago. Now, the Public Safety did approve it, but I just don't know. It is not, my understanding, DUI is not a felony until the third offense, um, but it also doesn't say if it was just one offense or not, so. But however, we did just also, I missed this, meant to bring this one up, Brian Renell did have a suspended license, but didn't really explain why, so.
You have your license suspended for not paying your...
You can, you can, but if it's maybe something that we need to put on this form, if your license is suspended, please explain why, because if it is just that, then it's this. But this doesn't really say, I don't know if, again, Public Safety looks at him and says it was forever ago and it's okay. So I'm just, I'm just bringing this to our attention, so.
Thank you. Counselor Harpen?
I just want to mention as well, um, on the same license, it does say right above there, I've hold, held a Massachusetts driver's license and have had it for twelve years, so I imagine...
But I don't know if that means consecutive, because if you go over to another one, Renell says he's had a driver's license for eleven years, but his license was suspended seven years ago.
Right.
So you could hold a license for twelve years, just doesn't mean it was the past twelve years, so.
Mayor, you want to add?
Yeah, I can't speak to the, um, the suspensions or anything like that, but that's one of the reasons why I want to clarify the ordinance and, and have some more language around it. And I've also requested of the city clerk to work with the police department to update those forms, because, one, they're ugly, and, two, I don't think they really give you the information that you need to make a sound decision.
Agreed.
I think we've been through this before as a council.
Right, I think, yeah, there's one time we didn't, or I know I didn't, I voted against it, somebody was convicted of fraud, so I felt like we're dealing with a vulnerable population, and I didn't think somebody with a fraud conviction should have a license. I know that was the last time I remember having a conversation about what was on there. So we do have a motion and a second, the police chief or his, um, designee has signed off on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
One abstention?
No.
Oh, two abstentions.
Only because I, I want more clarification.
Not an abstention, there was two noes.
I'm sorry, two noes objections, so that still leaves us two, three, four, five passes. Thank you. Just going back to the agenda. Open forum, the public has two minutes to speak on matters of municipal significance. Please approach the mic. Two minutes, name and address for the record, no personal attacks.
I'm Robert Smith. I've lived at one six three North Street. Just want to let you, first of all, I'll say, Mayor, City Council members, the Constitution in this country guarantees me the right to free speech. Now, I've been in this city, this Saturday, six years. I've been attending these meetings for five years. In all my time alive in this country, which for eighty-two years on Sunday, I've never had threatened anyone, never broke the law, never was arrested. Now, there are rules to, if you want to, anyone wants, in this city government, wants to silence my speech, they're going to have to deal with other, other agencies, for example, Civil Liberties Union, and if it doesn't work out, I will sue. Just be clear about that. This is serious to me, because one council who, if she saw an ant in front of her, would say she was...
Counselor, no, no, sorry, Counselor, Mr. Smith, no, you do have a right to free speech, you do not have a right.
I'm not naming anyone.
Freedom, it doesn't matter, it's inappropriate.
Well, you get the point, I'm making. If you want to silence me, there's going to be trouble for the city government. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council on issues of municipal significance? Mr. Cardamino, you raised your hand, go ahead.
Robert Cardamino, one seventy-three Quincy Street. You know, there's an old saying, you won't be judged by good, all the good things you do, you will be judged by the one thing you're, one bad thing that you do. And applies to this council also. Some people, you know, have made mistakes over the years, and if you want to hold that over their head forever, that is entirely wrong. And the second point I would like to make is, um, this gentleman here has quoted all the ADA violations in North Adams. That's not an ordinance in North Adams. That is a law, and this city can be sued and the, and the, uh, businesses can be sued for not applying and comp, uh, and, and, uh, compensate, not compensating, but, um, make provisions for the handicapped. So keep that in mind. You know, it seems as though, uh, when somebody's down a little bit, you want to kick them, but that's wrong. You know, have a little compassion for people. You know, we're all supposed to be created equal, but sometimes when you get elected, you think you're more than equal. Thank you.
Elena Sprague, one hundred Woodland Ave. I just want to say kudos to our Public Services Department for doing a really great job cleaning up the roads during this last snowstorm. I think they did an excellent job, and they're really cordial, especially if they see you outside, so, thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council?
Hello, Isaiah Moore, forty-three Highland Ave. First, I would like to co-sign on that letter from Roger, or from Mr. Sheldon and the, um, I'm sorry, what was the, uh, the Commission on Disabilities? Couldn't agree more with that sentiment. I think we, as a community, should think a little bit more on what we consider public ways. We do, as a city, clear the roads, and we do a lovely job, as mentioned before, I'm proud of the work that our DPW department does, but the sidewalks are often left to the owners of the land next to the sidewalk, which can create hazards for, if not cleaned properly, and oftentimes they are not, which can create hazards for many people trying to use those sidewalks, which leads them into the roads, which leads them into, which leads to risk for everyone involved. Also, just a quick second thing, um, I usually don't bring this stuff up in public, I usually try to catch people before it happens, but I noticed that the, um, reappointment of Paul Senical for, for the Planning Board, I think there might be a typo or something, I don't know if that needs to be fixed. Planning Board members are supposed to serve for terms of five years, but we just, the council signed them on for, until twenty twenty-seven, which is only four years.
I could, I can speak to that.
Okay, perfect. I'm sure whatever the mayor is about to say is a great explanation, I just wanted to make sure that it was caught. That's all.
Yeah. Mayor, can, might as well speak to that.
So when I came in last January, I thought that Mr. Senical had already been reappointed according to the file that I had, and then it was discovered as we were doing the other reappointments that he hadn't been officially vetted by the council, so therefore, he's already served a year, um, so we didn't extend his term. Back in the day, we used to call those carryover appointments, which I tried to avoid, but again, it was just a documentation thing, so we're all good now. Thank you for bringing that up, though, that was an excellent question.
Keep us, keep us checked.
Yes, and I appreciate that.
Anyone else wish to address the council?
Just want to say, it's a new year, a new time, I want to wish everybody a healthy, happy new year, prosperous, and in a lot of ways, I'm thankful for all the councils here, because they have to do a lot of work, and they keep coming back, no matter what happens, nobody's perfect, and I think we got the greatest mayor right here, the people's mayor, and she's doing a great job. And everybody in here, I wish you a happy new year, healthy, prosperous, and a great year, and, uh, this is the great city of North Adams, where nice things happen.
Don't forget it.
I love it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor's update?
My face is back to its normal color now. I just kind of want to make a, a comment about the ADA issues within the city. I just kind of want to make a, a comment about the ADA issues within the city. I also have a mobility issue, and I walk regularly to keep up with my mobility issue, so I really understand what people say about our sidewalks. In fact, last summer, I tripped on River Street and tore my rotator cuff over a raised sidewalk, so just from my own mobility issues, I understand that, and I certainly want to work with Mr. Sheldon, as well as everyone else in the room, to address those. It's long, long overdue, but it is a priority of this administration, so we are compassionate about that, and we do care, and I do believe the, the city council does it as well. Moving on, I'd like to introduce William Shanahan. William, could you stand for one second? William is my intern for the semester, he'll be working with me and within city government for now until May, so I hope everyone on the council gets an opportunity to interact with William, but he'll be working on some research, special projects, and lots of great stuff, so if there are things that you feel he could be plugged into any of your committees, reach out to me, and we'll see if we can make that happen. My last quick update, it's not really an update, it's a request. I sent out a email, uh, Monday, Sunday or Monday, about a special meeting that I'd like to have to appoint a school committee vacancy in February. Before I roll out the process, I'm trying to just confirm with the school committee and the city council that you would be available on February 28th at 6:00 PM. If you could respond via email, that would be very helpful, so I can continue on with my process. And that's it for tonight. I will be making a brief presentation, I hope, at the next meeting, about trying to generate some new interest in boards and commissions, and maybe doing a quick presentation on how citizens can navigate our website to make inquiries, or reach out to apply to be on boards, et cetera. Other than that, we've got a lot of work going on within the city, and everyone stay safe, we are having another storm tomorrow, more details to follow on that. Thank you.
Counsel, liaison reports in minutes, and liaison updates and counselors concerned. Counselor Bona?
Yes, Mayor, to the chair, this is sort of continuation of the discussion with ADA, but as you know, this sort of becomes an annual plea of mine, and actually, you hear it more, but part of the ADA and talking about sidewalks is with the sidewalks being cleared. So, um, this is probably going on our first full year, or will be, where we have a code enforcer, so I'm just curious if that position is going to be used, to be out there and putting enforcement on sidewalks that aren't being cleared, and also, again, even though I know I have seen tickets, but my biggest annoyance is vehicles on sidewalks, and.
My too.
Part of that is an ADA issue, because one, it really annoys me when people are concerned about their vehicle getting hit by a car in the road, but not actually concerned about pedestrians being hit, and especially those in wheelchairs, and parents with strollers, et cetera, but, uh, main question is more about, are we going to be enforcing sidewalks not being cleared?
Yes, so the answer is yes, it's a combination of reports from highway, the police, and code enforcement. We had little door hang tags made, so our first is going to be a reminder of the ordinance. I think we've sent out like five or six from the last storm, but it's more of, hey, reminder, this is what the ordinance says, could you please shovel your sidewalk? But keep in mind, for example, this last storm, it was really heavy, it was coming down all day, so we are trying to work with people, but we have taken the next step. I think last year, you officially voted the ordinance right before I came in, and then, you know, the season went on, but we do, we did reach out and do some, obtain those hang tags for doors, because we really want to just remind people, so we've, we've hung a couple of those, but we, we are working as a team to address that.
And how will we enforce it beyond that?
So beyond that, we're going to have to do, I can't remember the name, just went out, the, uh, non-criminal, the tickets you voted on years ago, a name, come on, anybody, help me.
Non-criminal citation.
No, the citations, we'll have to issue the citations.
And will I go to the property owner versus, you said door tags, but door tags probably go on tenants, so who is responsible?
Well, it would be the, it would be the property owner, but we are trying to really remind people of the ordinance, you know, a lot of people don't stay up reading our ordinances.
Again, just my annual plea.
Yep, I hear you, and, and I'm on the same page with you about cars on the sidewalk.
Oh, I hate that. Counselor Harpen, then Counselor Sapiens, and then Counselor Oleskowitz, and then Counselor Wilkinson.
Um, I too want to thank Mr. Sheldon for coming and his, his letter. It, it was eye-opening to me, I, I knew that there were problems, of course, I'm not someone that, that has to deal with it every day like you do, so, and it's, it's something I'm sure that is on your mind more often than, than the rest of us, so thank you for bringing it to our attention. I did, I, I do want to say, I went to one of the meetings on the Commission for Disabilities, I, I believe it was May or June, I'm not sure, it was somewhere around there, and there was a list of items that had concerned them, so I just want to let you know that the city is working on things, they have actually accomplished some things. So some of the things that we've accomplished is there is now a paddle, and at the entrance to the city council chambers, the paddles on the entrances to City Hall work. There is an area in city council chambers for someone in a wheelchair that can actually come to the meeting and sit comfortably, instead of being squished in a small little area, so that has been accomplished, as well as tonight, you'll notice we have two owls, so one of the issues that was very concerning was closed captioning, because that's also a, an issue with disabilities, because people would like to be able to watch the meeting, but they, they need closed captioning in order to watch it, so not only could they not hear it through streaming, but because of the, the sound and the audio was not good, the closed captioning therefore wasn't as, it wasn't good either, so we're hoping that with the two owls in this room, that the closed captioning will be clear and understanding as well. So I, I just want to let you know that these are some of the things that we've been working on with the mayor, and, you know, we are making some progress, so thank you to the mayor, thank you to the commission, and thank you to Mr. Sheldon for your work.
Counselor Sapiens, and then Counselor Oleskowitz.
Yes, okay. Well, Counselor Bona said a lot of what I was going to say, but I also want to add to that, if you have a neighbor or somebody that you know is at a difficult time in clearing their walks, nothing wrong with going out and offering a helping hand, I've done it myself in my own neighborhood a number of times, and I encourage anybody that's able to do so, get out and help a neighbor that can't maybe not be able to get out and do the clearing themselves, and just be a, I call it a sidewalk angel, just be out there to help your neighbors whenever possible. Thank you.
Counselor Oleskowitz.
Through the chair to the mayor. This is an issue that was brought up in council ballot three years ago by former Counselor Moulton. I've noticed that the sidewalk on the north, or the south side of Union Street in front of the old Delft Tree Mushroom Factory is closed again, and I was just wondering if there was any issue with the structure, it came in front of us before of falling bricks.
Yeah, we, we did have some bricks or slates from that side come down, I'd have to check with Mr. Maranti, but I can do that and shoot you an email.
Thank you.
Counselor Wilkinson.
Just an update, tomorrow night at 6:00, we're going to have a general government meeting to discuss, I think, meeting number 20, on, 27, on short-term rentals, and hopefully it'll be the last before we bring the final product to council. We're also going to have on the agenda possible changes in, um, council rules, so if anybody's interested in either one of those ideas, please join us, 6 o'clock right here.
Um, I want to make a few comments. One, Mayor, could we add a comment about having the sidewalks cleared, was it 24 hours after end of a storm, or whatever we, whatever the ordinance became? Could we add that to the, the call that goes out about, um, the parking and the snow emergency? That might be a way to remind people, um, people, along with helping with people clearing out their sidewalks, reminder that if there's a fire hydrant in your neighborhood, if you could keep that clear, clean off your cars, I know I make the annual speech every year, but, you know, you have lights on your cars so that not, as much to, for you to see people, but so other people can see you, if your lights aren't cleared off, they might not see you, not only that, you're supposed to clear off your license plate, a lot of pickup trucks don't get a lot of snow on them, and they don't clear off their license plates. Bring your pets in, the whole standard that I do. Also a reminder that February 18th is the Winter Fest from 9:00 to 3:00, and so that'll be good, hopefully, you know, we might have snow, maybe, it may rain 17 times before then. I also want to, I know Counselor Abasahana is not here, but he has been appointed to the Mass Municipal Association's DEI Advisory Committee, in his role as both the city counselor and the DEI officer, um, in the city of Pittsfield, so that was kind of exciting news this weekend at the MMA. It was a good event, it was great to be in person, finally, the last time we were in person was 2020, end of January 2020, and then, you know, something not so funny happened on the way to the forum, so it was good for that, there were a lot of great workshops, some interesting people, there's new counselors, people that have never been to annual meeting, they have 72 staffers, 21 of them had never been to an in-person annual meeting, so that was kind of an interesting concept, the turnover and the younger people moving up, most of you would have gotten an email, Jeff Beck with his retiring after 31 years as the head. There's a, obviously be on the lookout for webinars from the Counselors Association. We've got a, kind of switched up some of the positions, and we've got some new regional counselors from different areas, so check it out, check out a webinar, we try and focus them either after work or during lunch, so you can hopefully get away. We've had some great ones on budgeting, and, um, DEI, and immigration, and school budgets, and all kinds of topics of municipal significance, and things that help us do our jobs every day. Anything else? Motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.